Okay, the time is now six o'clock and I call to order this August second, two thousand twenty-three council workshop meeting. And we will begin with the pledge of allegiance. Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. And we begin first with citizens to be heard. If there's anybody who has a public comment on on anything that's not on the agenda that you'd like to discuss, um, I saw a hand raised over here. Sure, Kevin, if you want to take the podium, we need your name, name and address. Some of us know who you are.
Okay, good. Well, my name is Kevin Rockwood. I live at two forty-three Southwest Street. Uh, I'm one of the partners of Rogue Duck Hospitality. Uh, we currently operate one thirteen social in downtown. Uh, today you'll be hearing about a loan request for our new property, which is at ten North Pitt Street, uh, which is Pitt Street Station. Uh, I just wanted to thank everyone for your support, uh, for our current restaurant and for your consideration for our upcoming establishment. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. And sir, you had your your hand up there? If you, if you, you know, to the podium, we'll need your name and address, please. At the podium, yeah. I don't know that we have anybody by Zoom, but it's easier to hear when there's a microphone. Maybe not to hear me.
I have trouble hearing. I have a bad ear and echo and.
Yeah, it's a little, the audio is a little, seems a little off tonight, but but go ahead, sir. Floor is yours.
My, my name is Dawn Smith, three fifty eighth street, Carlisle. I was born and raised in Carlisle. I'm here to discuss utility billing. I'm a renter. Used to be a homeowner, used to be a landlord. Now I rent. A problem is occurring now because my utility bill is being sent to the landlord. And so it's mailed to them at their address. They have to open it. They see my bill and then they have to get it to me. Normally with a nice little note reminder when the due date is. So, uh, I like public utilities, public water and sewer. It's fantastic. Uh, I want to pay for it. But, um, the bill should be sent to me and not to them. Same with trash now. It seems like it's all bundled together. Now you're sending my trash bill to my landlord. And I used to get maybe get one bag a month. Now I'm being charged seventy-five dollars a quarter and I can't complain about it because the bill is sent to him. Now I see you have a program for people under hardship like me. You give me a break of a quarter, that's still way more than I used to pay. Now, uh, I don't use a lot of water and I don't mind paying the minimum. It's metered. Do you know what I use? But the trash, you don't know what I use and I do my best to keep it minimal. And, uh, but I know how it is. We put as much in there as we can. So I live alone and my street has lots of families. But the problem is now, uh, when you bundle my utility bill and my trash bill in with my rent, then that's kind of like a credit default swap and it's creating a lot of pressure for someone like me. It's my landlord, Charlie and Mary. It's not a corporation. It's not a apartments dot com. It's just an elderly couple. So, you know, I might get a text back, uh, we got a, a warning from the borough that the utility bill wasn't paid. That's my daddy's bill. My daddy's name. You get down there, you pay that right away. So now, I was here, I get a bill due July ninth, which is a Sunday. You have to read closely because it's not paid by two thirty or two o'clock on July seventh. It's late. So I pay it. It's timestamped, it's dated. A week later, I get a call from the landlord's daughter, utility bill's not paid. You go pay them. Nobody likes to be told to pay a bill that's already been paid. So I called the borough and questioned what's going on. Well, you haven't helped out the bills pay. I know the bill's paid. I paid it. Why the false alarm? Called them on Friday afternoon, sitting stew about it all weekend. Maybe there's a glitch in the system. Lady didn't know. So were there a lot of people that received late, late notices? That were paid? It's questionable. I don't know. So, my rent was cheap and my landlord is just a person. Might be eighty. He's got kids, fifty. One hit of stroke, can't work anymore. His wife can't work. I stay home and take it. They need money. Now I'm poor. Now he keeps my rent low, but it's, but the rent should be up. Now you're trying, well, utility bills in with them. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. No comments, sir. Okay, any other citizens to be heard? Okay, we'll move on to, uh, meeting minutes. Is there a motion to review and approve the July fifth, two thousand twenty-three workshop meeting minutes?
So moved.
Motion by the deputy mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Mellon. Any, uh, any discussion? Hearing that, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed saying nay. Motion passes. Uh, next up is down, presentation from Stacy Gold on, from the Downtown Carlisle Association. Stacy, the floor is yours.
Hi, everyone. I'm Stacy Gold. For those of you that haven't met me yet, and I am proud to be the Main Street Manager for Downtown Carlisle. First of all, this photo that you're seeing here is courtesy of Jim Chaney, but isn't it beautiful? So I bet if I asked each of you what comes to mind when you think about Carlisle, you would all give me a different answer. Some might say it's the rich history, the colleges, the car shows. To some, maybe it's the diversity or the nightlife. Or perhaps the livelihood of the downtown and the variety of our businesses here. Maybe you see it as a destination, maybe you don't. But have you ever thought about how lucky you are to live or work here? Did you know that Carlisle is number two on Visit Pennsylvania's list of the best walkable and shoppable small towns in PA? Or shockingly, it's number ten of the top ten places for millennials to live. Carlisle is recognized as the number four best historic small town in USA Today's Ten Best Contest and was one of the ten All-America City Winners. World Atlas recently named Carlisle as one of the eight cutest small towns in Pennsylvania and also recognized our downtown for having one of the best main streets in the state. That's an incredible honor. Furthermore, Downtown Carlisle is one of the oldest and most established accredited Main Street programs in Pennsylvania. The DCA or Downtown Carlisle Association is one of the oldest and most established accredited Main Streets in all of Pennsylvania, as I said. And in order to do this, the DCA must follow the Main Street Approach and report our progress to our coordinated programs, which are the Pennsylvania Downtown Center and the Department of Community and Economic Development in order to achieve and sustain our accreditation status. The Main Street Approach is all about a plan that focuses on transformative strategies, which is a deliberate, deliberate, deliberate attempt to revitalize and strengthen the commercial district's economy by following the four points of the Main Street Approach, which are economic vitality, design, promotions and organization. The DCA's leadership continues to bring a renewed energy to the business district by offering a fresh approach to marketing our assets. Although we focus on revitalization, beautification and historic preservation, our primary mission is to put feet on the streets to ensure that our downtown merchants are thriving. Our events have brought in thousands of participants and provided them with the opportunity to explore our unique shops, eateries and breweries and for locals to rediscover another blood for the historic downtown. We provide a full calendar, calendar of events and promotions to increase tourism and economic development in the C-one District. And some of them also serve as fundraisers for the organization. Let's first take a look at the signature events, several of which boasted record participation and attendance last year. The two thousand twenty-three Ice Art Fest was the largest in its seven-year history, making it our coolest event of the year. And if you're in town that weekend, you truly know just how cold it was. According to traffic data analytics, there were approximately eleven thousand visitors on Sunday, which is the last day of the event. We had over one hundred ice sculptures on display throughout the downtown and many that were interactive photo opportunities, including UPMC's Ice Art Throne and EVAM include Olacus's jail cell. We also had our first live carving, which you can see in the bottom corner, and Benchfield Farms returned to offer carriage rides for the weekend. Next was the Ford Parade Park and Party, and it's the first of two collaborations with Carlisle Events. And it typically brings in an average of three hundred parade participants to town annually. Last year's Corvette Parade Park and Party brought in five hundred cars and a massive crowd, reportedly one of the largest in the event's history. The Welcome Jam introduces the incoming Army War College students and their families to all that the downtown has to offer. We provide live music on the town square and offer lots of games and activities, including a scavenger hunt to find our fictitional Colonel Carlisle. This year, we are going to be setting up at the Carlisle Barrett's for their Welcome Expo to invite the families to join us at our event, which is just a few days later. The Harvest of the Arts is in its forty-first year. This event on High Street features over one hundred artists and craft exhibitors from all mediums. Plus, we offer festival food, a kids' alley, live entertainment and a display of vintage sports cars. We are excited to introduce the first of two new celebratory events this year. We are going to be partnering with Molly Pitcher Brewing Company to host a community block party along East-South Street. The Molly Pitcher Birthday Bash will be an event to celebrate the birthday of our town's beloved heroine and also the anniversary of the brewing with her namesake. Let's hope we all look that good at two hundred and sixty-nine years old. The DCA's Design Committee is in the process of researching methods and funding opportunities to replicate and replace the deteriorated mural. Uh, we hope to bring awareness to our plans at this event. In two thousand twenty-two, we successfully joined forces with Parks and Recreation to co-host the Making Spirits Bright Holiday Parade, which will once again be sponsored by the Royal Order of the Eagles. Our collaboration increased participation, including appearances by several local high school bands. And stay tuned, we are hoping to add inflatables to this year's parade route. The Holly Jolly Jubilee was restructured from the foremark Santa Claus Come to Town Events and transformed into a full day of free, family-friendly activities, including face painting, balloon twisting and a variety of craft projects. We invited several community organizations to participate, including the Bosler Memorial Library, the YMCA, the Tool Library and Dickinson Arts Collective. The Carlisle Town Band's Rosquintet performed Christmas carols and there was also a special guest appearance by Buddy the Elf. More than five hundred kids came out to visit Santa and his elves that day. And many gathered to observe the traditional tree lighting ceremony. And the second of our new celebratory events is going to be Hachi New Year. And we will be dropping a giant six-foot replica of Hamilton's famous hachi dog on New Year's Eve. So the DCA also organizes multiple retail promotions throughout the year. Although our community events are always free to attend, we think the value of the downtown experience is priceless. The Downtown Peep Show was a fun new promotion that we added just before Easter using a catchy play on words to pique curiosity. The promotion included a preview of items that were new for spring, a scavenger hunt and a window decorating contest. Everyone got in on the fun. You can see here is an example of a peep-infused cocktail that Hook and Flas offered and also rice crispy treats that were brought to you by Helena's Cafe. This year, we brought back what was once First Friday's, then Kiss, which is the Keep It Small Saturday promotion. We introduced a sweets and treats theme and added sidewalk sales for merchants. We highlighted unique items that each location offered and once again used a play on words, stop by for a sweet deal. Treat yourself to a new item. Some businesses chose to offer sample tastings such as wine, cheese and chocolate. Although the series only ran for three summer months, many of our scheduled events coincide with the second Saturday of every month. After hearing that many of the downtown businesses were in a summer sales sl- slump, we stepped in and added a Christmas in July promotion to try to generate some foot traffic. We primarily promoted clearance items and the arrival of new fall merchandise. We added a selfie with an elfie contest and scheduled guest appearances with Summer Santa during a four-day event. The Holiday Open House was added last year to kick off the holiday shopping season. We introduced a Christmas Carol scavenger hunt and also hosted a cookie contest amongst the merchants. Participating locations proudly displayed their, their clues and their baked goods. We awarded certificates to the businesses that offered the best tasting, most creative and most festive cookies. Scavenger hunt participants were awarded love bucks as prizes, which could then be used towards their holiday purchases. To promote and encourage purchasing from our small businesses during the holiday season, we then added a shop local campaign that featured our love bucks, which are the universal gift card for downtown merchants. The campaign not only showcased great gift ideas, it also featured the many locations around town that you could spend your love bucks. As a result, we sold nearly, nearly four thousand dollars in certificates in just a few weeks. And I want to let you know that a hundred percent of the certificate money that is redeemed by the merchants is paid back to them. And although Small Business Saturday is not a new concept, we took the promotion to the next level last year. At our request, the Carlisle Theater created a mailbox to drop off letters to Santa that also served as a drop-off location for our contest entries. It made it a prime spot under the marquee to hand out our, the national campaign bags that feature the shop's small totes. And in addition to receiving a free tote, each bag also contained a five-dollar love buck certificate. So essentially, we were rewarding people that chose to shop local that day. There were Santa sightings and we also invited Cantata Carlisle to stroll through the downtown singing Christmas carols. Our partnership with the Carlisle Theater began when we had the idea to host a comedy night and therefore needed a location large enough to accommodate. We brought in comedian R. David Reed and sold nearly six hundred tickets. Despite not scheduling another comedy night, the DCA is proudly sponsoring, uh, the theater's concert series for their upcoming fiscal year. And next I want to talk a little bit about our borough collaboration. We are extremely grateful for our friendship and collaboration with the borough. Both the mayor and the borough manager continue to serve on the DCA's Board of Directors, which helps both organizations stay up to date on important issues. The mayor made appearances and gave speeches at the opening ceremony of Ice Art Fest and also at our tree lighting ceremony. The DCA team was able to provide input in the selection of the downtown lamps, which you can see pictured on the right. Have important conversations regarding initiatives for the EV charging stations. And we were also able to discuss the possibility of replacing parking meters or adding parking kiosks in the future. And we are especially grateful for the Public Works Department, who have provided physical labor and tools whenever they are requested. They've been hanging banners and putting up the massive Christmas tree, which I hear they made a fun contest out of. Public Works also provides storage for the holiday lights and the tree, plus it serves home to the Santa shed and the DCA box truck. We obviously had a great time with the Parks and Rec Group during our parade collaboration. And furthermore, the DCA staff was able to provide input during the strategic planning sessions. These initiatives align those transformative strategies I was telling you about in the beginning, which allow us to piggyback on, once we begin the process of becoming a designated Main Street community. The benefits of designation will offer a significant impact to the Carlisle Borough and the community at large. But the DCA is so much more than just an event planning agency. We are a crew of two and sometimes it takes a village of support to help carry out our mission. Therefore, recruiting volunteers is essential. But not every job is fun. As witnessed here by the Boy Scouts, um, this crew was on trash duty in freezing temperatures during the Ice Art Fest. To help make, keep our town looking beautiful, we organize volunteers to help with both a spring cleanup day and a fall cleanup day. Of course, we wish we had more time and manpower to keep up with all the necessary weeding, trash pickup and beautification efforts that the downtown deserves. Blue McCarlisle is one of the beautification initiatives that is maintained annually to add flowers and greenery to the downtown storefronts. Because of our partnership with the Rotary Club and the Carlisle Area Civic Foundation, the sidewalks are lined with brilliant begonias and planters. And the lamp posts are adorned with large hanging baskets. The DCA is also responsible for the town's holiday lights and decorations. We have a crew of volunteers that work with us to change out the burnout bulbs before they are hung in the downtown. Earlier this year, we installed vibrant and beautiful business banners that now line the streets of the downtown. There are two sizes that hang from either the lamp post or attach to the overhead lights. And after finalizing this project, we hope to add hometown viewer banners to honor our veterans and active-duty armed forces. We partner with the Chamber of Commerce to host ribbon-cutting events or other mixers for downtown merchants. Whether it be for a new opening or an anniversary celebration, we love to show our support and make these new connections. I've recently been asked to do several educational presentations for community organizations, including the Carlisle Sunrise Rotary and the Kiwanis Club, and have successfully recruited volunteers from these interactions. To show how grateful we are for those that offer their time and talents to support us, we hosted a volunteer appreciation open house event in November. And earlier this year, we hosted our first merchant forum to encourage our business-to-business collaboration and idea sharing. Additionally, it gave the DCA valuable feedback on the events and the promotions that we've been planning. Social media is a necessary tool in our marketing efforts. If you follow the Love Carlisle Facebook page, you will have seen the weekly live videos we did last year to highlight the vendors at Farmers on the Square and the Merchant Monday videos to highlight several of the retail businesses that are unique to Carlisle. Here's an example of a post we did to show the graphic T-shirts that we purchased from Georgie Lou's Retro Candy. We also use it to announce new businesses that are coming to town. This is Eclipse Gaming. And to promote community events such as Earth Day. We take notice when a national celebration has an impact on our local community. Of course, it was recently Hot Dog Day and then it was, uh, Chilly Dog Day, which if you miss Bill dressed up as a hot dog in front of the Hamilton, um, that was something to see. And then as, um, we're proud to have, I think there's twenty-four salons in downtown Carlisle. So that was National Beauticians Day there on the right. We are constantly encouraging you to shop local. We do a weekly Taste of the Town feature to highlight the vast variety of downtown cuisine. There are twenty-eight restaurants in the downtown or places to grab a bite to eat or drink, just so you know. You may have noticed that we've often been joined by special guests, including our field representative from the Pennsylvania Downtown Center. And that is Bill Arrowood with us at Chen's. Hopefully you've seen the updated version of the Downtown Guide, featuring all the amazing things that the downtown has to offer. You'll also soon be seeing a new and improved website that will have more, be much more resourceful and interactive. And I know this all seems like a lot, but we still have tons of ideas left to develop. So I just want you to know that this is everything that has occurred in just fifteen months since I've been here. This is just over a year that, that these things have happened. And I want to thank you all for your ongoing partnership and financial support of the organization. Your commitment to the vibrancy and success of our downtown is vital to furthering the revitalization efforts. And we try to dedicate everything that we do to make Carlisle a great place to live, work, stay and play. So thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. I've said it, I've said it before a few times and, uh, since you and Phil have been on board and dig the bull by the horns. Um, you know, it's been, um, mu- much more vital organization. Uh, but, uh, and, and I see the statistics in the meetings that the, the events have, um, have really improved in attendance and, and vendors and, and all the above. And I think New Year's is going to be a, a pretty big hit. And I say that in part because when we unveiled that landmark sign, um, they asked me to give a speech and, um, and I talked about Tommy, who was in Greece at the time, at the time. And but the biggest applause line was a line I had, and I said, you know what we should do on New Year's Eve is, is drop a hachi dog instead of a car when, when that comes back. So that was the biggest applause line. And, uh, and I think it was probably a biased audience, but, but they're pretty excited about it.
In the traffic analytics statistics that I was telling you about earlier, the number one destination when people leave events is the Hamilton. So it is proven and the likes that we get on any Hamilton post is astronomical. And I think we can get away if doing a drop at nine o'clock because Tommy said so. Cause it's probably not going to happen at midnight, just, you know, but yeah.
Great. Thanks again, Stacy. Um, I am going to get, to accommodate a schedule. I got a, got a request before the meeting. I'm going to change the order. Sorry, Joel, I'm dropping this on you. And I should have mentioned it before the meeting. We're, we're going to go with item A under the Sustainability and Community Planning, um, uh, for tomorrow's neighbors. So, you know, Hubert, you're, you're here to, to give a, a presentation. Um, Joel, if you want to have the presentation, it's your, your committee. You want the presentation first or make the motion, your call. Just do the one. Um, yeah, we'll hop back.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I will open up my committee with one item that the Borough Council considered a letter of support request from tomorrow's neighbors for a special exception or variance application at three forty-three East North Street, Carlisle, to operate a transitional reentry housing facility for male individuals returning to the community after being released from prison.
There's a, there's a motion, uh, to approve a letter of support for tomorrow's neighbors. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by the deputy mayor. I know there's going to be discussion, so, Mr. Gilroy.
Thank you. Hubert Gilroy, I'm representing tomorrow's neighbors and Kurt Dandridge is with me here also. Uh, procedurally, just so you understand, I've been coming before council for forty-plus years. This is the second time I've asked council to support something before the zoning hearing board. The first time was last month. Uh, and, but what's unique about both of these applications is both of them are community-related. Uh, there's four items on tomorrow night's agenda. I have all four items. So if you want to get sick and tired of listening to Hubert Gilroy, come to the zoning hearing board tomorrow. But there's two items such as, uh, Dunkin' Donuts is going in behind, uh, Chili's and they're requesting a special exception. And then there's a setback. So those are businesses. We don't expect council to take a position. I would never ask you. We don't expect council to take a position. I would never ask you to do that. But you did take a position with respect to uh uh the church transferring the property to Safe Harbor. And this one, you've already taken a position in support of uh tomorrow's neighbors. And Kurt Danderson, I understand, made a presentation. Uh and there's already a letter that we filed with the zoning hearing board. Uh, we're just here to just clarify things procedurally tomorrow night. Because this particular use is not a use that's specifically permitted or prohibited in the in the borough under the zoning ordinance. We've asked, we've asked the zoning hearing board for a special exception. They could authorize the use subject to a number of conditions that they think are reasonable. We've offered some conditions within the application. Interestingly, I just met Kurt Hetrick, who's with the East Side Neighbors Association. Uh, who's back there, came to speak. I know he'll steal his thunder if he wants to speak, but he just turned to uh Kurt Danderson and said, you know. We think maybe you walk before you run. How about just eight people there for a year or so and see how you're doing? Uh and then come back. Kurt said, that's great, no problem. So we're gonna add that as a proposed condition before the zoning hearing board tomorrow night and suggest that they approve us for eight. Individuals and uh we also uh come back in a year if there's no incidents, see if we need to expand. Uh, the other thing I wanted to point out, not in the application, if you read the application is uh Kurt explained to me. Although this is not specifically overseen by a state agency and and permitted. Uh, they're gonna have a probation officer assigned to uh this particular facility. Every probation officer, every uh person there is gonna be subject to strict probation restrictions. Kurt provided me with the documentation that they must sign and he must sign. Uh, probation officers can come in and and do inspections at any time, verify things. Uh and enforce certain rules with respect to keeping drugs, guns and other things out of the home. So there is state and county supervision uh in the package that we filed. The county probation officer uh office endorsed this and and you see in that packet. Well, we have a huge grant from Cumberland County. So there's a lot of community support for this. Uh, the facility itself is ideal. It's already been used for multiple individuals within the facility. Uh, so there's, there's a lot of reasons to just uh give us a a thumbs up. Your recommendation is not gonna be determinative. It'll be a legal issue before the zoning hearing board tomorrow night, but uh it's just nice if we have some support. Kurt, you wanna just say a few things? Knowing they have a long agenda. You say a few, you say a little few too.
A lot of Kurt's in the room, yeah. So I I just really wanted to just give a little bit of background. I was here a year ago in June talking about this. At that point, it was an idea. It was something we hoped to go. So um since that time, we've housed five individuals. Every one of them has held employment. Everyone's doing great. Um, we've had no crimes committed, no violations from parole, no community reports or police contact. As as Attorney Gory said, you know, we have ARPA funding. We've received resort support for this program from the Attorney General's Office, Law Enforcement Department Corrections, Democrat and Republican lawmakers, which as you guys probably know is hard to get. Um, and this Borough Council, which we were very grateful for. Um, our home has eight bedrooms. So to be honest, to limit it to four people. You know, and and I guess the limit is people that aren't related. You can have as many family members as you want and four non-blood related individuals. But we have no family. We consider ourselves a family, but we have no blood family. So really, we're just making the the exception to say all of the individuals there will not be related. Um, like I said, it was eight bedrooms, four individual and four that have hold multiple occupants. So this house is suited for it. It has an industrial kitchen. It has a bathroom with two toilets, three showers, four sinks and just one of the bathrooms and two other bathrooms. As discussed, we are look, the previous group home held sixteen individuals. So sixteen individuals lived within that home. We're gonna ask for eight for the first year at least and then uh progress from there, see how the program goes. And I wanna point out that these men will be working different schedules. So we're not talking about all these men being at the house at the same time. Um, and we are being studied by Penn State. Penn State is studying what we're doing. They see value in it. This data is gonna be used to improve reentry across the state and beyond. And we want to specify that we are not bringing these individuals to the community. These are not individuals that wouldn't normally be coming to this community. All we're doing is providing the same people that would come to this community some support. So we could have these eight individuals spread throughout the community and nobody know where they are. We can have them in one central hub, receiving support. Having a parole officer overseeing them all. And state parole has actually made the consideration to make sure the same parole officer sees them all. Cause it's easier for them. It builds more of a community. And the the main reason I would really ask that you support it is. And these aren't my words, but in Carlisle, our history inspires innovative ideas that create a safe, inclusive. And welcoming community where every individual can thrive and make a difference. And that's your strategic mission. And we're asking you to support it for that. You know, it it's easy to support things when everybody, it's non-controversial, but sometimes when there is controversy a little bit, it takes bravery to stand by our words and still support it. So I'm asking you to do that. And I wanna share one last thing. When I was here, I shared a quote before from a juvenile lifer who had done thirty seven years in prison since the age of sixteen. And he wrote me in a letter and he said. You say tomorrow's neighbors is a family. Please adopt me. It does get me angry how the state gave us kids life without parole sentences and treated us like discarded trash. I would love to prove them all wrong with my future success upon release. My biggest concern about reentry is just the loneliness of not having a supportive family and just seeing how people socialize and communicate. You say tomorrow's neighbors is a family. Please adopt me. That man's name was Michael and he's lived in our house for a little over three months now. He's working at the Family Dollar. He's helping his neighbors out and he worked in Middle Park to make a beautiful, beautiful, uh, I don't know what you call it, flower arrangement in the middle of the park. He is thriving because this program exists and we just wanna do that for more individuals. So, thank you.
Thanks, Hubert. Thanks, Kurt. You know, we we haven't adopted that uh mission statement yet, Kurt. You know, the alternative that we're considering. Yeah, the alternative we're considering is welcome to Carlisle now, get out.
Hey, thank you very much. Any questions?
Does does council have any questions? I I was gonna just make sure. I know you invited Kurt Hetrick. I know this has been important to Kurt. Yeah, yes, please, Kurt.
Curtis Hetrick, three nineteen, East North Street, uh Colonel. The the thirty hu- three hundred block of East North Street was kinda shocked when we found out this was coming in. We found out through the sentinel. But we've had a chance to meet with Kurt and get to know and understand the program. These individuals do need help. They need that support kick in the butt to get out there and and maintain their own lives. So from the east side perspective and my perspective, we're okay with it. Um, but some of the questions that are coming up, if we do have a series of incidents, how will that be tracked and reported? Uh, to the community, I'd like that to be a consideration that there's some structure around any incident reporting. Um, and a registration, is there a planned registration with the police or with the borough as to who's gonna be living there? Is that public information? Okay.
Kurt, Kurt, when you, when you, we're over here. The mayor. I know, it's the the voices everywhere. Um, when you talk about um incident reporting, what type of incidents are you talking about?
The the Carlisle Police Department gets a call out there where there's a burglary and it tracks back to there. Um, the residents need to know that that this is occurring for their own sake. This is an increased risk to our neighborhoods.
Okay, yeah, so uh that and that's why I wanted to understand what you were looking for and how, you know, who who you expect the recipient of that information.
I, from an east side neighbors perspective, since we're very connected in that community, if a notification was sent to east side neighbors and we can communicate that. That would be a start. Yeah, we're gonna put you to work too. Yeah, just because it's a pilot program. We need a, we need an incident or a track record that shows statistically how well we're doing. I hope we have none. Um, I'm sure the chief does too, but um anyway, just consideration.
Thank you, Kurt.
Okay. That that's something we can suggest the zoning hearing board as additional condition. If they approve our our application, uh they may not approve, we'll see.
Right. And I think Counselor Hicks may may have a question or comment. I I I first wanna understand. You're looking for a letter of support, um understanding, as you said, it's a, it's gonna be a legal question for the zoning hearing board.
That's right. You're not making the decision. The zoning hearing board will make the call tomorrow evening.
We we support the, we support the project um under the conditions that have been agreed to and and let them make their legal.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, okay, good. Counselor Hicks.
Ju- just one uh technical question and then a just general comment, but um. Can you articulate one or two sentences of the primary reasons why this would not be um considered a group home for myself and the audience?
Well, we we looked at the definition. It just didn't sit with the group home. This is. I I didn't see it in the analysis from the zoning officer. Now, I can't speak for him, but I, in the letters he sent, we didn't see it as a group home.
Okay. I I asked primarily, the definition and conditions are fairly extensive. And any one of which could potentially have been considered disqualifying. Um, I I I was just curious if you were prepared to say what specific parts of the definition you you thought this did not um comply with? If that's available.
Not at this point. I'm not prepared to address that.
Okay, thanks.
Um, I would, I I mean, looking at the definition for group home, um. Uh, under the one subsection, it it requires. That it pretend the oversight of persons who need such assistance to avoid being placed within an institution because of physical disability, old age. Or mental retardation, developmental dis- disability. Um, or that the applicant proves to the satisfaction the zoning off- officer meets the definition of another uh another handicap. So it's focused on, uh, you know, not first focused on transition housing for. Um, for for people previously convicted, um, it's other other services. So I think that's probably why. I'm not trying to make your argument for you, but um.
You did, you did a good job.
Um, I play a lawyer during the day. Um, so that's, I think that's probably what doesn't put that group home.
And and if we're up and running, this is maybe something that Borough Council may wanna incorporate into the zoning ordinance and adopt certain regulations. That if it works.
It's funny, you shouldn't mention that, cause we are working on that. So um revising those definitions, but um. Appreciate that, counselor. Um, and I just wanna make a a comment that um, I think what we had tonight was a. Poster child of the importance of neighborhood associations. Where where we had the opportunity for residents to to talk out in the open, to discuss their concerns. Uh, you know. Provide support for their case, to to do the due diligence, to um have candid conversations with their fellow residents. So when we get to moments like these, um, we're not coming from all over the place. We have some very. I I think concise, uh, specific things that we can address, which which it appears happened, um, perhaps uh right, right before we got here. And and I I just think that's a reflection of of why uh neighborhood associations should continue to thrive here. So thank you for for uh being, both of you for being part of that.
It it is unique from my perspective because Mr. Hetrick sat in front of me. He didn't know me. I didn't know him and we just started talking and. And he just turned around, well, why don't you limit it to eight to start? Kurt said, okay, makes sense, you know, let us, let us prove ourselves.
Great. And and I trust the zoning hearing board will make a a well-informed decision if there are any conditions to uh this. Uh, particular use uh uh for councils, unless there are other comment, uh, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I have a question and this is somewhat in a fall, but I I know there was a presentation at the East Side Neighbors Meeting a couple of months ago. And this is somewhat building upon a a point that Mr. Hetrick brought up, um, that there were a number of people. On the three hundred block of East North Street, as well as at the association and and I think frankly even here at the borough that were. Somewhat unaware that the property was going in this specific facility until after it happened. I I guess I'm just curious if you could speak at all to. Why this effort to go before the zoning hearing board is occurring now, after the property is already, the facility is already in use as opposed to this happening. Like in March or something like that, um, and there being more notification prior to um the the facility opening.
Kurt did everything correctly, okay? Got the money from the county, got everybody on board, given him his uh uh. Their approval. He mentioned all the various constituencies that have supported this, including his body. Uh, and uh his zoning officer knocks on the door and says, oopsie daisy, you didn't get his zoning permit. Uh, so that was, you know, he's not a zoning lawyer. I wasn't representing him during that other, that whole entire process. And to to say, well, have you talked to the zoning people to see if you can do this? So it was that simple, you know, a gentleman who really had enthusiasm. For a great idea and was just moving forward and did everything correctly except check the zoning. And then uh when he got talking to the zoning people, that's when he got talking to me. So it was, I've seen this happen before. Right, well, his only officer's doing his job. That's, so I'm not critical of him. He found out what was going on and and issued issued a notice. And uh so we responded when the notice was issued. Not critical of that. We didn't say he issued a wrong notice.
Yeah, and I I think maybe the point Mr. Hetrick's bringing up is is just, um, there was a somewhat parallel situation with a. A recovery home uh on the same block, um, where it was kind of information found out after the fact. So I I think the difficulty is just the, there being like a lack of information in advance. Um, as opposed to, you know, it coming after the fact. And I think, I think that's something that um. I I know from after the East Side Neighbors Meeting and and you know, from discussions, it's it's something that's kinda being grappled with as to how. We ensure that's the case. Uh, but I I think that for for residents, I think I think that's important. So that these conversations are happening. Before the facility is opening, um, so that everything's cleared away um in advance. What, the the, and and I I I appreciate your explanation. I just just kinda wanted to um. Provide that clarity as to maybe why I was posing that question.
Well, for further clarification, when the non-land use lawyer looks at this and sees that there was eighteen people there previously. And then after that, the property owner was renting to ten or twelve people, uh, they sort of figure that that's okay. But again, we're we're punching the right tickets here as far as going to the zoning hearing board. As the ordinance requires.
Any other?
Uh, I guess I just had a a question about process because Mr. Gilroy is correct. I mean, we did, of course, endorse. The concept of tomorrow's neighbors last year when when Kurt came to present to us the first time. And I don't think there's anyone in this room who doesn't think that this is a really important and much needed organization. Um, but I guess my question is, we're we're being asked for a letter of support. What is that letter of support specifically going to say? Are we asking? The zoning hearing board to specifically approve this variance? Or will the letter just be a broad letter of support for the organization?
That's, that's why I posed the question that I that I posed. I think the way I framed it is, is that we support the project. Um, I I don't think we're going to specifically say, please approve this. Um.
That's, yeah, that's all we're looking. We're not saying, you you tell them what to do because they're not gonna like that.
Right, right. And you know, and if if approved, we'd like to see the conditions that have been agreed to.
They might support the project, but for some reason legally they may think they gotta turn it down. I hope uh we don't get in that discussion tomorrow night in here, but we'll see.
So I think that um when we approved um the letter last year. Cause we, as Hope Station approved, I mean, did a a letter as well. Um, and I think that what it was, and Kurt, you correct me if I'm wrong, was that we were um. We provided a letter of support for him to go after funding for it, am I correct? So it it wasn't the particular place. He was going after funding at that time. And so we did, like Hope Station has done a thousand times for other organizations that are going after grant funding. So that's what we, um, that's what we say yes to or. Or the letter of support was for the funding, not necessarily for the facility or where it was going to be.
Well, what, once you approve the. Well, what, once you approve the concept, you know, like Kurt said, four of these individuals could move into the house next to me on College Street and, and function basically the same, uh, so we support the concept, it has to go somewhere. And this house is the ideal location, and it has the history of multiple people, so it sort of makes sense. The neighbors are appropriately concerned, and they, you know, they're, they're expressing some issues. Uh, Kurt's talking today, for example, he said, there's going to be conditions in, in the approval if we get it, there's no arsonists, there's no sex offenders, and these other conditions that we've been talking about, so we're trying to tone it down to a certain area, but if you support the concept, you got to put it somewhere, and, and allow it to be somewhere.
Just maybe another procedural question, um, did, does the motion need to be revised? Because it, it, the motion reads, you know, um, a letter of support request for tomorrow's neighbors for a special exception or variance application, since we're not directly saying, i- if we're not directly saying we're, you know, telling the zoning hearing board to do that, more so supporting the organization, do we need to change the wording of the motion?
I don't think, I mean, it's a letter.
I, I mean, that's maybe just a very technical question, but.
Consider a letter of support request from tomorrow's neighbors for a special exception or variance application, that's, that's what we're doing, it's part of the, part of their application, yeah, yeah. I think it's, it's okay the way it is.
I am interpreting the letter of support stating, it, it's echoing their approach to going to zoning hearing board, you're going as, as a not specified use. My support, which I will render, will, will primarily reflect the fact that I, I concur with the use of that under the conditions that it's not a specified use. There's, their backup plan is to request the variance if the zoning hearing board doesn't regard it as not, um, a, a specific use. So, um, that's, that's, that's my approach in, in deciding whether to, uh, support this letter. If that sounds like a way off, uh, it's probably a good time to.
Yeah, and so what I was suggesting was something a little more general than that, right? Not, not to even get specific as to the special exception issues, the variance issues, that this is a project we, we support, and even be as, as, uh, straightforward as saying, um, we understand that you'll need to make your own legal determin- determination, we're not interfering with that legal determination, but we support this, this organization, we support, support this project.
Understand.
And I think that's all you're really looking for.
Yeah, that's fair.
Okay.
Yeah, we're just looking for some additional support, because sometimes if you get a zoning hearing board member who's on the edge, if, if they know council likes the concept of bringing this into the community, uh, that may be of assistance.
I, I think we've made that already abundantly clear, in, 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 in my mind, I, I think the difference is, we're, we, we don't, we know, we don't just support what they're doing, we're, we're okay with the location, the, the, the classification of it not being a defined use, um, being in this specific area.
I don't think we're making a legal determination at all, all we're saying is that we support the project at this site, and, and we allow them to make whatever legal determination they're, they're going to make. If they decide, you know, if he doesn't make the arguments he needs to make, and, and they decide not, it's, it's, uh, it's, it's, uh, not a use not provided, um, it doesn't meet the, the standards of variance, which is, use variance would be pretty difficult to, to meet, then that's, then the, the project doesn't go, go forward, I mean, it's, it's shut down at that point. Um, and I, I don't, I don't think we should be in a position, and they're not asking us to be in a position of supporting a legal determination one way or the other, they're just asking us, you know, be clear that we're supporting this, this project at this site, and the zoning hearing board makes the legal determination that they're going to make, because as, as attorney Gilroy aptly put it, i- i- and it's true, I mean, zoning hearings will, will do that, if there's some gray area in the law, and they could go one way or the other, a letter like this might, might tip them one way or the other.
Okay. Um, I, I'll just read for everyone, so the zoning hearing, hearing board may permit such use as an exception, if the applicant proves to satisfaction the zoning hearing board, that the use would clearly be less offensive in impacts and nuisances than permitted uses and be compatible with permitted uses in the district. We are not going to weigh in on our interpretation of that.
That's, that's a legal determination, we're not weighing in, right?
Okay, um, I, I will then, uh, unless there's further discussion, uh, we have a second for a letter of support, and, um, I think we now have clarity as to what that actually.
What it should look like, and then the challenge is going to be for us to make sure we, we capture that accurately. Is there any other comments, any questions? Okay, all right, and hearing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, back to the mayor's report. So we have, we have a request from Domestic Violence Services of Cumberland and Perry Counties, and I'll form that into, into the following motion. I move the council approve the Domestic Violence Services of Cumberland and Perry Counties' request to tie purple-colored ribbons to borough lamp posts as a sign of solidarity for Domestic Violence Awareness Month contingent upon the following. Ribbons permitted to be hung from the borough downtown street lamp poles beginning September thirty through October thirty-one. The ribbons shall be removed no later than the morning of November first, two thousand twenty-three. Ribbons need to be secured tightly and at a height that prevents them from being easily removed by pedestrians or inclement weather. Inspect the area periodically to ensure that the ribbons remain secure and in good condition, is there a second?
Second?
Second by the deputy mayor, just, I, I don't know that I need to say this, hopefully everybody understands that, you know, people throughout our community and throughout, throughout the world, um, suffer often in, in silence from, uh, domestic violence, and this is a, a very important service that's provided here in our community. Um, any, any further discussion on this item? Okay, I'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay, the motion passes. Next up, and I'll, I'll defer to the deputy mayor on this, if you, if you're, you're willing to take this one up, uh, Vision Zero Resolution.
Thank you, um, so, back in May, maybe, um, uh, one of our climate action committee members, Mitch Stiles, uh, came and presented, um, some information about, uh, Vision Zero and, um, some of the, um, you know, concerns and issues that are happening within our borough and, and the greater, um, uh, state, region, world, um, relating to traffic violence and keeping folks safe, um, that are using our streets, especially our most vulnerable folks. Um, so Mitch did send along, um, uh, a first draft of, uh, a resolution, and, um, I did, uh, for council's, uh, um, uh, information, there's two in our Dropbox at this point, so we have, um, one that was a little bit more condensed, and then the one that says draft two is actually draft one. Um, it was actually the original one, so it has a number of elements towards the end. Um, I guess the conversation that we're having right now, um, how, adopting a resolution is, is the first guiding document. We've talked a lot about it up here, about wanting to, um, focus more efforts on, um, uh, looking at our streets, looking at our built environment to, um, to see everyone that, uh, uses our spaces, and really understanding what some of the barriers and limitations and, and safety, uh, concerns are. Um, I think that collectively we all do care about that, I mean, we see it in, um, things that come through from our public works, like our engineering, uh, looking at different road, uh, options and, um, you know, traffic calming, and we see it in, um, in a number of different areas. So I think we're, you know, on our way there, we've definitely implemented some things, but we don't have something that is our guiding starting point document. So adopting resolution essentially would get us, uh, started on this, um, uh, some things are in our climate action plan as well. Um, some things even with our, uh, um, truth and reconciliation, you know, like trying to look at, uh, areas that, um, that certain groups, um, are more likely to, um, be injured through, uh, traffic violence. So, um, I put in both of these because the first one, um, uh, has most of the, um, I mean, it's, it's targeted but general, uh, more general des- uh, descriptions, um, but then at the end, it's, it's more of, uh, a little bit more of specific guidance, so, um, I didn't want to lose all of that, but I think between staff and, and, uh, the Climate Action, um, Steering Committee, we kind of were going back and forth, uh, on what we want this to look like. Um, I think, uh, when we were in one of our committee meetings, you know, uh, Mayor Schultz, uh, and I were, uh, talking about what, you know, some of these elements that are in here. And what, and I think the, the key in what I'm looking at, uh, and what Mayor Schultz had brought up, is that this is a guiding document, not just for us today. Because like I said, today, you know, today I think we have a pretty good, um, uh, group that really is focused on this, but in two years, we get new counselors, we get new staff, um, you know, is it something, um, that this, when you read this resolution, you know what it looks like on your daily work, like when we have our approvals, how we're looking at it, does this align with our, um, Vision Zero? Um, are we going to be redesign, redesigning a road and, you know, it actually is worse? No, I don't see how we would do that at this point, but, you know, um, looking at, at some of those things and, and asking the thoughtful questions. Um, so I, that's where we are here today, when we're looking at the, I think, the two different resolutions and what things maybe, um, would be, uh, in there, we could, um, have a discussion about it, um, but I think, uh, a couple of the elements that were on, uh, the longer version, um, I, kind of like when we talked during our, uh, um, strategic plan and our, our mission statement, right? That word inclusive was really important, so, um, one of the words in here, uh, let me see where to go. When we're speaking about vulnerable people and, and what, uh, you know, so some of the other areas, uh, so I guess I could just read it aloud, the, this is what we're, what we're looking at, um, a resolution, uh, the council of the borough of Carlisle, accepting and adopting Vision Zero to achieve zero traffic deaths, deaths and serious injuries on borough streets by twenty thirty-five. Uh, Borough Council joining cities across the world in the Vision Zero movement to eliminate traffic-related deaths and serious injuries. Uh, traffic crashes are among the leading cause of deaths and serious injuries in the world, in the United States. Uh, whereas loss of life and life-changing injuries due to crashes are unacceptable on Carlisle streets and serious crashes are preventable. And whereas Vision Zero provides a framework for reducing traffic deaths and serious injuries to zero while increasing safety, healthy, equitable mobility for all. Whereas traffic deaths are serious, and serious injuries occur disproportionately in low-income communities, communities of color, and/or communities with low car ownership, and whereas, uh, streets and transportation systems have traditionally been designed primarily for maximum vehicular capacity and mobility, rather than providing accommodation for all modes and users. And whereas Borough Council recognizes that streets are a key factor in the way people experience the public realm and play a vital role in promoting economic development, public safety, health, and quality of life. And whereas the borough oversaw the implementation of the road diet in two thousand and twelve, acknowledging the need to build streets that are safe and convenient for all. And whereas traffic deaths and serious injuries are not inevitable but preventable, and whereas saving lives and people's health is not expensive. Whereas successful implementation of the zero, Vision Zero action plan relies on a systemic, systematic, uh, approach, and that includes interdepartmental coordinated initiatives and community support of Vision Zero goals and objectives. And whereas the safer environment for pedestrians is consistent with the borough, borough's climate action plan, uh, goal of reducing community vehicle miles traveled by ten percent by twenty thirty-five and twenty-five percent by twenty-fifth. So, then it goes to now there, be it resolved, Carlisle Borough here adopts the Vision Zero strategy as a comprehensive and holistic approach to eliminating travel, traffic fatalities and severe injuries on its streets. So that is the first portion of it, and then the second portion is what, uh, in our packet, these elements were not necessarily added in, and so it's a series of be it further resolved, and some of these, I think, are the things that, uh, so the first one, uh, Borough Council will commit to the safety of its streets by design for the most vulnerable users in order of vulnerability. So, I mean, it's some of these statements, when I'm actually reading them, I'm thinking like for, for staff, or for us, when we're looking at things, like, we're flipping it instead of looking at how, you know, how many cars can go through, what's our traffic flow, it's, we're looking at the pinch points and ensuring that we see those first, we're not ignoring the cars, but, so I think that those are some, some terminologies that, um, that, that's my question. Is it something that we need to have some of these extra elements in here to really give that guidance for future folks when they're looking at these? So, I mean, a couple of, I'll just finish off, and then we can have the discussion. Um, Borough Council, uh, the, um, be it resolved, the borough will commit to the proficiency of movement for the least harmful road users on the borough on roads and downtown streets, uh, that the borough commits to prioritizing the movement of people over the expediency and convenience of inordinate objects. Uh, Carlisle Borough will integrate human failing into its approach, um, that we will avoid implementing policy that will further harm those who are vulnerable to automobiles, we will develop an active transportation plan no later than two thousand and twenty-seven, that it takes input from cyclists, pedestrians, and multimodal users. Uh, will deploy quick and cost-effective measures to protect human health and lives on its streets as soon as possible. Um, commits to the goal of implementing, eliminating traffic fatalities and severe injuries on borough on streets by two thousand and twenty-three, and will work with the Penn- Pennsylvania Department of Transportation to eliminate traffic fatalities and severe injuries on state-owned roads by two thousand and thirty-three. Almost done here, uh, Carlisle Borough will monitor, track, and report at least annually on measures of, uh, efficacy, including, but not limited to qualifying injuries and deaths as well as the areas of concern. And finally, that the mayor, borough council, manager, engineers, and public works are authorized and directed to take all necessary steps to further facilitate, uh, effectively, uh, the purpose of this resolution. So some of these, I think, uh, are those guiding elements, some of the things that I think that we had talked about is that some of those dates, you know, we can't, we don't want to, I think the question has been why we took some of these things out, because we weren't sure if we can hit those dates, and we don't want to, you know, shortchange ours, our, ourselves by adding in arbitrary things that we haven't been able to vet, so I think so, my point is, is that some of these things that are not in the original one, I think, have a lot of merit. I don't, I can understand why we wouldn't want to necessarily, um, uh, put something in so specifically that we have not been able to work through, but at the same time, I don't want to take it all out just because of that concern, and I wanted to see what council's thoughts were on this. Um, and I think Joel had also said that some of these elements would likely come into, um, this was on the side, uh, that, that some of these elements could be in the uh, further climate action plan revisions, so there's some of that too. My point is, is that I want to make sure that when we're finally doing this, that it, we're not losing really important guiding thoughts.
So just to clarify, correct me if I'm wrong, um, what we're looking to do tonight is, is get feedback from council so that we can, um, better craft, uh, a resolution that, that can be considered perhaps as, as soon as next, next week. On the point of the, the dates that are thrown in there, I mean, something like, you know, as soon as feasible, um, that sort of thing to give us some flexibility in, in those areas. There are some other, there are some other phrases that I'd probably massage a bit, um, but nothing substantive on those, but, um, should we go down the row and see if there's feedback, does somebody want to jump in? Is that a no, you don't want to jump?
No, I'm, uh, I, I think it's valuable that I, I stand, I think fans that, uh, wish to bear to the. Uh, not wanting to commit to a cer- certain date by saying as soon as feasible, so, yeah, I'm, I'm on board with that.
Anyone else have any, any thoughts on it, councillor Hicks?
Um, I, I don't have any strong opinions of, of whether some of these items should be in the resolution, as much as I have a strong opinion they need to be somewhere that is reviewed and accountable. Um, I, I will say as a general statement, uh, probably three or four of these, I think, um, fold directly into the work we're doing in the climate action plan in particular, with, with regard to the developing municipal ops plan, which within there is going to be, um, a transportation plan, which is outlined here, obviously, something that promotes, say, something that promotes more accessible pedestrian bicycling, I, I, I think it's not a far reach to say that that will be done to promote safety. Uh, it's hard to promote that without, I think safety is the first issue that in people's minds in terms of whether they get out of their car and decide to walk on a bicycle, so I'm. So I'm uh, happy to work um, with the Deputy Mayor or whoever and, and. Formally uh, make sure some of these, whether it's a monitoring issue or. Um, the delivery of, say, of an active transportation plan is captured. And the deliberation of the Climate Action Committee and, and as appropriate, rolled into an exaversion. Which, however, remind folks, uh, the committee. What comes back to council with any changes, it's, it's an active document, we intend to make it an active document. And then we'll have the opportunity to review if, if um, we have satisfactory sort of rolled those. I would mostly concern objectives and monitoring sorts of tasks to, to be captured in something that is a public document. That we can easily refer to. If we decide to keep it in the resolution, I, I think that's fine too. I would still probably encourage us to do the monitoring and accountability and, in the climate action plan with, with the committee.
And, and I'll just add that, uh, I think that that's um, really important, because we can't capture everything in this resolution. And there's things like, I mean, this is, that's what I mean, it's a guiding document to get us started with also some very specific things that we need to focus on. But I think that there's much further work to be done as, as you note, and, and to have that um. Uh, reflection and look and, and uh, evaluation consistently and, and mile markers. Um, to see where, uh, you know, how much we've accomplished and, and if we are on track. So I think that that's helpful to think about how we can use the different documents and the different guiding information that we have. To ensure that this is not just an empty, you know, resolution, it is something that we um, care about deeply.
I mean, I, I think broadly speaking, it's, I, I'm in support of incorporating a number of these into the resolution itself. Um, and I, I don't know how in the weeds we're looking to get here, like there are a couple of like more technical changes I might have. But I do have a question, so one of the resolved clauses is Borough Council will develop an active transportation plan no later than twenty twenty-seven. Although we mentioned not having a specific, what, could somebody kind of explain what active transportation plan means? Uh, like what that is, and if, if. It should be just like that we're committing to develop an active transportation plan that then incorporates all of these things as opposed to having them all as resolved clauses. If that second question makes sense.
Jared, do you have a definition for an active transportation plan? I don't, I don't wanna.
Not, not really. No, I mean, active transportation, I think is, you know, i- i- you're trying to make a distinction between motorized vehicle transportation. But you know, some of these plans include micro-mobility, which would have an electric assist or, you know, something like that. It sort of acknowledges that you're getting away from car-centric transportation, I think that's the point.
So we could maybe. Uh, adapt that statement, so it's a little bit more specific, is that what you're trying?
Well, yeah, I guess maybe what I'm asking is if, if part of the focus is that we're. It, 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 so I mean, the, the big thing is like we're adopting the Vision Zero strategy is the next big thing in, in the resolved clause. That we're committing to adopt a active transportation plan, and if yes, could the other resolved clauses be. Descriptions of what that active transportation plan is and what it should include? So you know, it, so as, as opposed to the ordering here, it could be like, you know, Borough Council will, um, commits to develop an active transportation plan. That includes input from cyclists, pedestrians, multimodal street users. The plant, which will, the, the, a plan which will incorporate or will include, and then listing a number of these things. Like commitment to proficiency of movement for the least harmful road users on Borough on roads and town, town streets. Um, commitment to priority of movement for people over the expediency and convenience of inordinate objects. Think if that makes sense, so basically using the other resolved clauses as descriptors of what the active transportation plan is. Is that like a route that we're trying to go with this, or am I kind of misunderstanding?
I, I would probably, yeah, I hadn't thought about that, but that's um, sort of do that and then uh, subsections as, as these other be it further result. With, with something like this, I wonder if that's maybe not the best way to go, because some of these things we ought to be doing. Regardless of when we pull together an active transportation plan. Um, so maybe you, you, you might list things in a different priority, but I, probably all these other things we ought to be thinking about. With everything we do as far as our transportation decisions. Um, so it suggests leaving it generally the way, the way it is. But to your first point, and some of the, and that's what I was alluding to earlier, some of the phrasing in here wasn't entirely clear to me. Um, I had a sense that that's kind of what we meant by active transportation plan. Phrases like proficiency of movement for the least harmful road users just sounds, we sort of need to. I'm out of time. Uh, I just put, put this in, in, in terms that it's, it's more accessible.
And that's exactly what I was going to say, that I think um, if we have this, some of these things are still called out in it. And that way, when we're looking at things, we're looking at the most vulnerable and it's, it's a statement we can call like, more like in our. Resolution, it says this, so, and it can give us more um, like backing as to why we're, you know, maybe adapting something. That we're planning or, or one of our uh, focused efforts, so I think that. I think that some of this can definitely be massaged before we would approve it, if we can bring it back next week. But um, that's, that's the main conversation that I wanted to have on um, these extra elements on it.
Sorry, I'm still taking notes. Um, any other, any other comments, questions?
You know, I'll just add, I, I, uh, I'm, I'm good with um, this updated version. I think the longer and the more detailed, the better for something like this. Uh, and I think I just echo Counselor Hicks' comments and Deputy Mayor, you know, not just for this council, but for future camp councils. You know, action keeps coming to mind, we, as long as these items are actionable. And we're able and future councils are able to be held accountable, um, we're doing a lot of stuff in a lot of different areas. I think this is obviously the right thing to do, I just wanna make sure it's not something, and I don't think it is, but something we would pass and then it sits on a shelf. Um, so the more actionable for me, the better, uh, and more accountability, the better, so we can do this good stuff. Thanks.
Anything else? Do we feel like we have marching orders at this point? Okay, alright, I, I have a good sense of it, I think I'm, I'm, I'm good with it, we can move forward with it and get, get a cleaner draft for council to consider. No, not really, no, we can't. No, we have, I know we have a, I was joking, the Deputy Mayor was asking if we wanted any other, uh, further feedback from the audience. I know a bunch of you showed up for this, we do want to hear from you. Is there anybody who wants to be heard on, on the side of Mitch, I know this was important to you. Um, I'd, I'd give you priority if you want, but we've heard, we've heard plenty from you, if you wanna defer. Sure, in the, in the back, if you could come up to the podium, we'll need your name and address, Mr. Smith, we'll, we'll come back to you.
Hi, uh, I'm Brian McDermott, I live at three forty-three G Street. I'm uh, involved with lots of bicycle-focused projects in town. I volunteer at LifeCycle pretty heavily for the past year, I'm a mentor at the Hennebar at Dickinson. Um, I'm on the board at the Carlisle Tool Library, where I just helped establish a community bike shop. Um, I'm bicycling is my primary mode of transport. And I think, uh, given, like we spent fifteen or so minutes at the beginning of this, hearing about all the. Um, projects that Love Carlisle has been doing in town to promote downtown events where people are walking. Patronizing local businesses, just being outside, outside of cars in our town. I think uh, while promoting all of that stuff, having a plan like Vision Zero just makes a lot of sense. It's, you know, very synergistic there, uh, because it just doesn't make a ton of sense to promote people coming to our town. Being outside of their cars while not having friendly infrastructure to people being outside of cars. And while the town has done some work to make the, make it more walkable and bikeable. There's always, you know, always room for improvement, and so I, I really like that you guys are talking about this, considering it. And so I think it's very important and works to make the town just much more livable. Yeah, that's really all I wanted to say. I'm thinking, I, I, I'm thinking about all the negative interactions I've had with cars on my bike and on foot. But we'll save that for another day. Vision Zero, good, thank you.
Anything else on the side of? Um, and I, I didn't ask, we don't have anybody by Zoom, do we, or anybody raising a hand by Zoom? Okay, thanks. Um, next up, budget and finance.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, so I, but a number of uh, e- items this evening, mostly action items, although the first item is a discussion item. Which is follow-up to something we talked about uh, last month, related to the outside agency funding process. So the current outside agency funding process, uh, through that, the Borough allocates ten thousand dollars from its budget annually. To organizations throughout the community for projects or for their missions. Um, that, there's, there's a process whereby they apply. Uh, we hear them here at one of our workshop meetings, uh, and then a small group, which consists of the Assistant Borough Manager. Um, a member of the Budget Finance Committee and then a member of the, um, sorry, Sustainability Community Planning Committee. Um, evaluate the applications, then make a recommendation to council for uh, funding award. Concerned that, I know Counselor Hicks and I both discussed, uh, when we were, you know, in the process of doing this last year. Um, is the fact that we've seen continual growth of the amount of organizations applying and the amount of money they're requesting. To the point that last year, the total request was three times that of which we'd allocated. Um, so we kind of worked through possible revisions to the process and there's a document that uh, is in your. Packet tonight that is what we came up with, um, providing a little cl- uh, additional clarity on selection for criteria. Um, providing a more formal application process whereby there are specific questions that applicants would, we'd be asking applicants to. Provide information on, um, and then also a, a allocation of additional funding. So currently, we're allocating ten thousand dollars once a year, what we're proposing is to do that twice annually. So basically, once in the spring and once in the fall, so it would give organizations, um, you know, two opportunities to apply in a year. Mind you, it would still limit, and then, and then putting a, a cap per organization of two thousand dollars per calendar year. Currently, we have a twenty-five hundred dollar cap per organization, um, this would increase the overall pot of money. But slightly decrease the amount that an organization, that each organization could potentially get. Um, and then we tried to, like I said, put additional criteria in there. So I think, you know, from what we came up with, we were just looking to get everybody's feedback, um, thoughts on this, see if people were in support of. You know, going forward with this or making some changes to it in hopes that we can have something in place here by the time we get to the fall outside agency funding process. So kind of open things up for questions and comments.
I have notes. You would expect that from the fundraiser. So I was looking at the primary funding areas, you have four bullet points there. Um, I would suggest in, in bullet point number two, um, you say social programs, funds may use to be, to support. Funds may be used to support programs in the community that improve residents' quality of life. Um, I would suggest that change, be changed to social programs and services. Um, programs and services are actually not used interchangeably in the nonprofit world. Um, so a service would be, let's say, for example, Project Share, the service that it provides is the alleviation of food insecurity. But it delivers that via a variety of programs. And the way it's written now, it implies that you're just looking for um, them to apply for funding for a specific program. So for Project Share, that would be the summer feeding program as opposed to the farm stand, as opposed to um, the, you know, weekly food distribution. So I'm not sure if that's what you were looking for, but, but asking for social, to support programs and services more broadly. Um, doesn't really limit, limit that. And then I had um, two questions, one is um, wondering why you have particularly children and youth there. There's a lot of organizations in town that provide really important services and programs to the community. That don't specifically deal with children and youth, they might deal with seniors, uh, they might deal with environmental issues. Um, so I'm not sure if we've all agreed to necessarily prioritize that. And then, under the criteria for selection, um, you have, does the organization face limitations? In securing funding from other sources, um, and I'm just sort of wondering the reason for including that. Um, and how you would judge that, because you don't ask in the application, you know, about other funding sources.
I, I can speak to the first one, I think that's maybe a little easier, um, to, to put it very simply, that's just a carryover from the current program. So that's the wording, that's the wording that we currently have for the primary funding areas. And um, I, I'm, I'm, I'm open to changing, get the social programs and services and, and just keeping it more broad. And removing the particularly children and youth, um, I, I'm okay with doing that. Um, I, I think Joel, maybe you look like you wanted to talk to, I was assuming you might wanna talk to the other point about. Facing limitations and securing funding from other sources, I know that just, just from my, my perspective, I know that was a, a, a thing that we had discussed. Last year when we were evaluating the organizations that applied. Part of the thing, part of what we were considering is that some of the organizations that were applying for funding, this would have been their only source, their primary source of funding. Whereas for other organizations, ba- based on the budgets that they shared essentially, um, whereas other organizations that applied for funding, this would have been just a small. Percentage of the funding they were receiving, and it wouldn't really make the difference in whether or not they were able to deliver the program. Or service or, or whatever they were requesting funding for, so I, I think, i- if from my perspective at least, is the way we were discussing it. One of the factors that we were thinking about considering is how important this funding is to the organization's thing that they're applying for. That, for, for lack of maybe a better way of putting it, but I can, like, feel free to.
No, I, I think, uh, you, you captured it right, Jeff, um, I would say one of the driving factors was that. Um, we had so many agencies that I think we de- determined were deserving and, and. Sometimes we, we would fund them less than when they requested to, to accommodate and acknowledge that. That these were valid requests for most of the agencies that applied, I think we, we felt collectively like it would have more impact. To be able to fully fund more agencies, what they actually requested. And, and I think the element of, in, in my mind, a criteria is, you know, do, does this group. Even have somebody who has enough time to write an application for a grant. They may not be a formal organization, they may not be eligible for a whole array of other grants or opportunities. Um, to get funding, in, in my mind, that, wh- whether it's a formal criteria or, or informal criteria. In my, my head, you know, I thought that, that was relevant in my consideration for, you know. What our purpose is, is to perhaps provide assistance where there's really not gonna be very many other avenues. Um, for certain groups, probably two or three maybe last night when we came here, probably. Weren't going to find opportunities easily in another source of the funding, so um, that, that was what, what drove that being in there.
And, and maybe just to build on that a little bit, um, so I mean, as, as I kind of alluded to, Joel, that that was something that we had discussed when we were evaluating the applications last year. Um, and I think part of what we were trying to do with this was to provide a little more clarity to organizations to, as to what things we were evaluating last year. So, so I, I, I think it was basically trying to make it at least a little bit less subjective, um, if that makes sense. So essentially, last year, I would say these were things that we were already trying to consider, but it wasn't like that was spelled out in the outside agency funding process. So if these were questions that we were asking ourselves and we were looking at them, we thought we should probably put that out there from the get-go. So that organizations are aware of like, the, you know, the people who are evaluating this, these are questions they're thinking about. But again, if, if others feel differently, I'm, I'm not committed to anything necessarily.
Would, would simply asking, not putting it under criteria for selection, but in the like overview of the organization or group. That is asking for it, simply asking if they're a five oh one C three, because a lot of the grant, most of the grants, you need to be some sort of designated organization. So, I mean, I think the barrier, one of the things I, at least I think of, but I'm not in the grants and I'm not probably, well, anyway. But uh, um, but the, uh, but the limitation is uh, having a five oh one C three that you can even apply to grants. And then also maybe asking, um, on the overview of the organizations, what the size. what the size of the organization is, like how many staff or, or anything like that, you know, um, because neighborhood groups, um, you know, there's a whole bunch of volunteers, but maybe no one, they're not a five oh one C three. So I think that that's sort of getting to the heart of it. There's some like grassroots kind of organizations that might come here, and I think just sort of understanding a little bit more about the organization, um, would help maybe inform that, but that's just my.
So I guess my confusion is, are we prioritizing the neighborhoods grassroots groups as opposed to established nonprofit organizations? Because, um, uh, speaking as a professional fundraiser, every dollar is important. It doesn't matter if you raise a hundred thousand or a hundred. Um, it wa- uh, you know, you're going to be able to serve whatever your constituency might be, depending on what size and type of organization that you have. Um, so s- some, you know, I work for larger organizations, right? Uh, not an organization that would have ever applied for this funding, but just the idea that, um, I might be penalized because we have a professional staff that writes a grant as opposed to a neighborhood organization. That's how I read that. Um, and I'm not sure I like, that seems to be a kind of exclusive language that I'm not sure really belongs there, so.
Um, and I won't say a whole lot, but I see exactly where Kate is going with that, coming from nonprofit also. Um, and understanding, just like she said, nonprofits need every dollar that they can get. And, um, usually the, the way it is when they're applying grants, this is, it's not the only grant that they're applying for. Um, specifically if the program or the service that they're offering, you know, is a large dollar amount, they're going to different places to get the funding and maybe funding that we give them is, is um, and additional funds to say they need to purchase, I don't know, food or, you know, some of the other materials. Um, and they can say, well, this is a smaller grant that we can apply for, for this particular thing. If we can get it through the borough, the other funds will be able to get from other foundations, like the Stable Foundation or Partnership for Better Health or something like that. So I, I, I see where, where Kate is coming from and, and I'm in that. So I'm kind of questioning some of it as well. Uh, so yeah, I'm there with Kate.
So, so if I am, you know, understanding this correctly, I, I think is the question we're trying to uh, decide here, what, and I think maybe I'm just echoing what you already said, so sorry if I am. Um, whether we want this to be tailored more towards smaller organizations versus organizations that are more established, um, and, and being more inclusive of all of them. Is that, is that kind of what we're asking?
Here's, uh, maybe pose the question this way. Um, if, if we give two thousand dollars to a more established, larger organization, and they are going to be able to deliver services to, you know, f- five hundred people with that because of, they're established, they're, they're effective. Or there's a smaller organization, we give that money to, be- because they're not as experienced, they're, they're not as large of an organization. Um, we're going to have a lot more impact, um, in what they're able to do, but they may not deliver this, they may deliver a service to three hundred people because of their smaller size and, and, um, lack of experience or organization. Um, and I think, I think that's really what the crux of this is, wrestling with that. Is it, is it important to support an organization because we're going to have a larger impact for that organization, or is it import- more important to serve an organization because it's going to have a larger impact for residents?
So, and, and this is strictly my opinion, coming from a small, um, organization, and especially, um, if it's an organization, um, that services people of color or is a, I don't like to say BIPOC, so I'm gonna say black and indigenous, people of color organization. Um, one thing that I found, and that's literally from going to, um, a conference with, for grant, for grant, uh, uh, funders, um, and understanding that it's important, even though they may not be able to reach as many, if they're smaller, they're already up against a lot of other obstacles because they, they can't pay for, uh, you know, a specific grant writer to come in and write their grants or, um, maybe they don't have access to all the available grants that are there. Um, and I don't know that I'm saying either or, I don't know that I'm necessarily saying that. I am saying though that, um, a smaller organization, a thousand dollars could make a big difference for that organization to get their work done. For a bigger organization, a thousand dollars, like if, if they've got a bigger budget, a thousand dollars, yeah, they're grateful for it because why wouldn't you be? But they're not going to hurt if they only get a thousand dollars. For them, it's, this is great that we've got this. Um, but a smaller organization is going to make great use of that money because it could be that that's what they're getting from everywhere and they're having to figure out how to take care of a service or a program. Um, like I said, I'm not saying that I agree with whether or not it's either or. Just understanding that smaller nonprofits need every dollar. They definitely need every dollar that they can get. It's harder for them sometimes to get it.
Yeah, and what I was trying to drive it, the question is, does it really matter? And I think councillor Mellon, that's kind of what you're saying. Does the question really matter? Is that, should it be a factor? Should we be looking at the impact on the organization? Or are we really just looking at what that organization is proposing and all these other questions? And how they're, you know, what, what they're delivering and how many people they're going to, to impact, or what kind of issue there, uh, that I mentioned that, that the last, the last time we talked about, what kind of issue are they impacting? And, and that priority within our, our goals and, and, and mission. So my suggestion is you probably don't, you just don't need that question, right? Because it, we should be measuring what's being, what's being delivered, what it's being delivered for and how, how, and how many people are, are being, um, and the issues being impacted by it, rather than whether the, the organization faces limitations.
I think that, uh, um, I agree with that, and I think the one thing that I'm thinking is, um, some of the larger organizations, when they come here, they say, you know, these are the programs we've done, this is who we've reached, you know, I think of, um, Boslar a lot of the times. Um, so the program itself sounds great, but I also am looking at, um, the capacity for them to achieve what they're hoping for. So an organization that has proven that they've been able to, you know, reach out. So there's the idea of like, this is how many people we hope to reach, but we, I would, I think the main thing in here is just learning enough about the organization just to see if they have done anything like this, even if it's not an exact same program, but they have had some sort of success. And if they haven't, how they can ensure that success to reach the people that, because I think like, that's the thing, the variable of small, large, whatever. When you have a larger organization, you have that trust, I think, already built in. When it's smaller, um, have they ever done anything like that? And how would we ensure that, you know, um, that they are reaching as many people as they're hopeful for? So that's, I don't know where that would be in there, but that's sort of the, the main part that was maybe evaluated in criteria.
I will also add, it's not an unusual thing to find a question on a funding application, um, that asks, um, what some of your other sources of funding are for the particular thing that you're applying for. How much funding have you already secured or who have you already asked? And that could be a way of getting at that without explicitly stating, we're going to prioritize, you know, people who need it more. Because I would argue that we all need it. That's why we're asking, so.
I guess I'm, I'm confused now. Um, if we ask them, what other sources of funding have you asked for, for this purpose, would, in your mind, what difference would that make?
Some funders don't want to fund a project if they're the very first funder, they're not able to fund the entire thing, and therefore they're just throwing their money away because that organization's not going to be able to raise the entire amount that they need. Um, some funders will only fund a project if they know that maybe fifty percent is already signed on, or there's the potential of at least that much signing on. So that's just a very common question to see on a, on a funding application.
I- if we're funding a program, I, I, we don't do agreements with these organizations, right? We never, yeah. Um, and it's, it's a small amount, but you know, with larger grants, you'll see agreements, and if they don't fulfill the, the obligation under that agreement, that we, you call the money back. Um, probably not doing that with, 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 with this, but you want to have, and I think I think there's some, I mean, there's some indication of a commitment in that, in that way in here, or there should be. But, you know, back to the, I guess the, the question is, uh, do we, do we need that information to evaluate? Do we need to know what funding sources they're, they're seeking in order to evaluate whether we should be providing those funds, given that we're not going to have an agreement that allows us to, to claw back? And can we really evaluate? Maybe we're the first one they're coming to, and they have a long line, who may say no or yes after us. We're not going to know until after we make a decision. Uh, so I'm not sure the, the, the advocacy of that, that, that question to start with.
There is a change here that does require them to provide, um, an, a status
Right.
at the end, which I think, um, is useful uh, to, to showcase and, and archive and document that this, this program is delivering, which is new, um, and I support. I, I understand, I mean, a- all the arguments here make sense to me. I, I, I think it is a difference of philosophy. I, I would tend to be in the camp that would, um, if not perhaps for the funding, we would have the organization may not exist or may have a, a good portion of their budget not funded. But I, I can see the other side. I'm, I might suggest that, you know, we sort of have that balance since there is a requirement to, you know, what's the estimated number of borough residents that you impact. If you're a smaller organization, you, you know, you might, might not have, have the ability to deliver as much. And so you're, you already have that balance sort of built into the criteria, but I, I, you know, we can strike it out if there's an agreement that that shouldn't be a cri- criteria, um, but I, I think it's important that we, we sort of decide whether that, that should be in there or not.
I, I mean, I, I guess maybe just to be, uh, I, so I mean, I'm, I'm perfectly okay with striking that out, maybe adding the, the question in the application parcels that Kate put in there. Um, I think part of the reason we put that in there is because last year when we were evaluating the applications, that is something that we did consider. And y- uh, me- maybe we're arguing that we shouldn't do that moving forward, which I get, um, but frankly speaking, I think that there is some subj- subjectivity in how these are evaluated. And I think part of the reason we included that question is because when we were discussing it last year, that's something that we considered ourselves, which wasn't transparent, if that makes sense, which is I think why we put it in there. Um, but again, the group of people that are evaluating these is going to regularly change, so that's gonna also fluctuate. Um, so there's going to be some inherent subjectivity to whoever, I mean, likely Joel and I won't be the ones who are evaluating the applications next year. So there'll be some subjectivity to who, who is. So I'm, I'm fine with removing that question and just keeping that consideration subjective, because I think if we remove the question, that's more or less what we do. I, I, if that, if that makes sense. Because in the end, the, the small group of three people that's evaluating the applications could in, like, one person could internally consider that to themselves. Um, and if we don't have it specifically spelled out, that's okay to me. Um, but I just, I think that's kind of why from my perspective, we put it in there is because that was something to consider last year. But I'm fine with not saying like, that's specifically something we are considering every year. Um, and if certain people do consider it and certain people don't, that's kind of what it is. And then, you know, the rest of council could kind of ob- object when we discuss the, uh, recommendations as, as a full group, if that makes sense.
Okay, where do we stand on this? Where is everybody on it?
So I, I mean, I guess I'm, I'm good with getting rid of the question. That's
Okay.
that's where I'm at.
Okay, okay.
Uh, ju- just one, I think, non-controversial thing. So you have in the top, which I think is right, and, and thank you for the work on this, um, everybody and the, and the doing twice annually, I think makes sense. So we have the ten thousand twice annually subject to change. My only suggestion would also be putting the, the two thousand dollar limit, I, I think is fine. Um, but in a year where maybe the feds or the state, you know, give us two million dollars and we can use it for some of this, um, if we're sitting on a hundred thousand that we want to use for this program, I think having that flexibility to say, let's give the library fifty, I'm just doing hypotheticals, but right, uh, or the farmer's market fifty thousand instead of two thousand. I, I wouldn't want to see us or future councils, um, be capped at a two thousand if there is more available. So that'd be my, my only thought.
So, so you're just kind of recommending saying two thousand dollars per organization and then also putting subject to change after that?
Or, or I guess you could put at council's discretion, because I guess the other situation you probably won't run into, but what if only two folks apply? And you have the ten thousand dollar pot and you want to give them each five thousand, um, if you're following this, you yeah, I don't think that would happen, but if it ever did, I.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm, I'm okay with, with adding that. Um, I guess but maybe a couple of other things to highlight that I, that I didn't, and Joel brought this up, um, at the end of the first page, we added a kind of after an organization has received the funding, providing some information to the borough. And I think that was for two purposes. One, so that there is some accountability. But also, I, I think the goal was to, for the borough to then be more proactive in highlighting the work these organizations are doing, so that we can kind of say, you know, we are helping to support these organizations, these organizations are doing this great work in the community, um, and being able to highlight that. So that's kind of why we added those two things. Yeah. Oh, and I guess another thing, um, that we discussed previously is regard, is in regard to neighborhood organizations. Um, I think we kind of just decided that that would be tied into this, um, so that any organization could apply. We wouldn't have a separate set of money for neighborhood groups because I mean, at this point, there, there seems to be one like neighborhood group that is kind of organized regularly meeting, and they, they, they kind of fluctuate and are at times hard to identify. Um, so this would just, we, we would clearly not like moving forward, not have that old program that we had, and it would all just tie into this, which is also part of why we have the two opportunities for, um, organizations to apply for funding.
Any other questions, input? Okay.
Sorry, just to clear, I mean, um, so moving forward then, we removed that one question from criteria for selection. Are we good with using this for this year? Because in theory, we're going to need to like, put this out there pretty much.
Pretty soon.
Like, you know, soon as possible, really, because the application deadline is still like the end of September, right? So
Yeah.
are we good with, if we get rid of that question, push, pushing this out to?
I see head nods, head nods, yep.
I'd suggest councillor Stewie that we have council formally, um, adopt the revised guidelines at, um, at the office council meeting.
That's, sounds good to me.
Okay.
Oh, okay. So move, move it on then.
Yeah, well, why don't I do this? Because Kevin and Rebecca have been incredibly patient. Um, and you may want to stick around for the rest of the agenda, um, but, uh, I'll, we can go a bit out of, out of order if you'd like. There's, we, we still have a lot to churn through. Um, so would you like to, to, we, we can jump to, um, economic development and, and consider the CDBG loan.
Great. Uh, alright, so I'll, I'll make the motion, then we can open it up for discussion. Um, so I make a motion, the borough council may consider a Borough of Carlisle Community Development Black Grant Shop Setting Loan, uh, and authorize mayor to execute the, uh, appropriate loan documents to provide seventy thousand dollars in CDBG program here, twenty twenty-two funds to RDH Downtown Ten North Pitt Street, Carlisle. The loan shall reflect a twenty-five-year amortization, two percent interest rate with a balloon payment at seven years. Approval shall be subject to the borough solicitor's satisfactory review and approval of said loan documents and provisions outlined by staff.
There's a motion to approve the CDBG's shop setting loan for RDH Downtown. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Perry. Is there any discussion among council? Rebecca, I don't want to steal your thunder. I know, I know these are the highlights of your, of your evening to come here and, um, give a presentation. Do you have anything you'd like to present? Kevin, you already gave us some comments earlier. You good? Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks for being here. Thanks for, uh, watching the sausage making process tonight. Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those both say nay. Yeah, you have your shop setting one. Good luck. Um, so we're back to budget and finance. We're, we're doing it, it's like playing darts.
Right, um.
Electric vehicle charging stations.
I'm gonna take these as two separate motions, or should they just be one, the two paragraphs here, for, for clarity?
Uh, you can go, go ahead and do them separately.
Okay, so yeah, um, first, I move that borough council approved the drafting and advertising of an ordinance, abending the code of the Borough of Carlisle to establish rates for the borough's electric vehicle charging stations.
Uh, motion to draft and advertise ordinance on electric vehicle charging stations. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by, we're 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 messing with that. Second by councillor Ramsey. Uh, any discussion?
I'll I'll just be super brief, sorry. Um, so I I wanted to thank staff uh, for their amazing work on this, super exciting. Um, just for the future, and I and I love the comparison of looking at um, price points in other areas. I think that that was very well done. Um, just wanted to throw out there as I think, you know, we had the conversation tonight about transportation and cyclists. And as the auto industry moves to full electric, hybrid electric, I I think, you know, we'll have to move with speed to get more and more of these chargers. Um, I understand in this ordinance, the also charging of the um, parking garage fee, but I'd love for us to explore in the future ways that I don't wanna say this would penalize folks that are charging their cars, but ways that would incentivize or reward um, folks that have those type of cars. Um, so maybe it's looped in with our parking uh, meter discussion. Uh, and finding ways where, I don't know if it's free or if it's fifty percent, if you're using one of those stations, um, just as an incentive, cuz I think we are now seeing and hearing about, you know, federally and statewide um, ways to get more funding uh, and more money from folks that are buying these cars to kind of make up for the loss of revenues and the gas tax. Um, so as that begins to happen and that conversation happens, I'd love for us to explore uh, more incentives to to, you know, reward folks that are going that direction. That's it. Thanks.
Yeah, just one one thing that we've talked about and I I'm I'm assuming that and there was some the price point was based partially on recovering the cost of this, uh, I I would like us to, assuming this is going into the parking uh, account, is to break it out, but break um, what I would consider sort of green incentives in into its own um, pool, so that they would be available um, when we're able to offset the costs of the installation and the maintenance and and all that, that that we could build build an account that we can then reuse for some of our climate action goals. So I would request finance, consider that. I don't know if that needs to be in the ordinance, but practically speaking, that I would like to see us start carrying that out.
Yeah, I suppose it could be, but it it can also be addressed at at budget time too. Right, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we'll work through that. Uh, for clarity, uh, fifty-nine cents per hour is just the cost of the electrical usage. Eight cents per hour is the fee that ChargePoint is charging us. Uh, so there's about eight cents additional funds that we um, but that will have that uh, could be used at, we propose for operating and maintenance um, of of the of the station, so.
So so this won't be our sole climate action revenue source? Okay. Okay. Um, any other discussion? Okay, I think I was about to call the question. Call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say nay. The motion passes.
Next, I move that Borough Council authorize the submission of a rebate voucher to the Drive PA Forward Level Two EV Charging Rebate Program, seeking reimbursement for a portion of the EV charging station purchase costs.
Motion by councillor Stube for the submission of the rebate vow voucher to Drive PA Forward. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Ramsey, very prompt second. I'll call, I need any discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say nay. Motion passes.
Next, I move that Borough Council approve A F, the AFGI agreement, AFIG agreements as part of AFIG Carlisle Borough replace five vehicles with electric vehicles.
Motion by councillor Stube to approve AFIG agreements. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Ramsey. Any discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say nay. Motion passes.
And finally, I move that Borough Council approve grant agreements with Cumberland County for the purchase of Motorola radios.
And final final motion by councillor Stube to approve the grant agreements with Cumberland County for the purchase of Motorola Motorola radios. Is there a second? Second by councillor Ramsey. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say nay. Motion passes.
And that concludes the budget finance committee report.
Thank you. ERCP.
Thank you. Uh, I have one action item tonight, and I am going to be making just a slight adjustment on the wording that's um, uh, been posted, because we're going to actually uh, have it as an alternate position versus um, I designated um, full committee member. So uh, Borough Council, I made the motion that Borough Council um, appoint Ms. Molly Wilkinson to a term on the Climate Action Committee as an alternate, as an alternate. Uh, the term will become effective immediately.
Uh, deputy mayor makes a motion to appoint Molly Wilkinson as an alternate to Climate Action Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Mellon. Any discussion?
Uh, just that uh, Molly applied for at the uh, one of the open position for Parks and Rec that we appointed someone else to last time. So it's really great to see that she is uh, interested in serving in another capacity.
She's she's an excellent addition, so.
Great. Uh, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say nay. Motion passes.
And that can uh, completes my report.
Thank you. Councillor Hicks and the floodplain ordinance.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll I'll turn that over to, uh, I assume Mark. Oh, to, I'm sorry, Jerry, sorry, Jerry.
September seventh, the big date that looms.
Please uh, please educate us.
Uh, so so my workshop presentation will be fairly brief. Um, I shared the updated flood insurance maps that FEMA put together, um, that are effective September seventh. Uh, the borough participates in uh, the flood insurance uh, program, the National Flood Insurance Program, which uh, entitles um, certain people within the floodplain to get insurance policies and make claims for flood damages. Uh, if the borough fails to update its uh, flood ordinance and regulations to reflect the newest maps by September seventh, those people will no longer be able to get uh, insurance policies. The the way staff are gonna try to set this up is to adopt the model ordinance, uh, or or rather recommend council adopt the model ordinance prepared by uh, the Pennsylvania Municipal League. And they've been contracted by uh, uh, Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency to put together model ordinances. Um, ideally, Carlisle would have been working on this months ago, but it is what it is. We're working with their staff uh, with at at the state N P M L uh, to make sure that our ordinance complies with the minimum standards. And uh, we would be on track, um, if council uh, directs the solicitor to advertise an ordinance uh, at the Sep- uh, at the August tenth meeting. Uh, and then acts on it at the September fifth meeting. Uh, provided the mayor signs it on September fifth, uh, we we would be in compliance with the September seventh deadline. Any questions?
I'll consider signing it. I'll think about it. I'll ponder it. Okay, thank you.
And that concludes my
Thank you, councillor Hicks. Public works.
Um, the alleyways, traffic calming, I will refer that to staff. That's Mark.
Alright, good evening. Staff gets um, calls from residents on a regular basis complaining about speeding. Uh, however, the most, majority of those complaints are on borough streets. Uh, in the um, in the last eight years, we received um, complaints about speeding on alleys three times. Uh, and um, the uh, action that staff would take in a uh, in response to complaints regarding speeding in borough streets versus or borough alleys, um, I'm suggesting should be a different approach. Uh, primarily because of the difference between a street and an alley. Um, the borough has about fifty-eight miles of uh, roads that we own and maintain, and we have about eighteen miles of alleys. Uh, the alley by by definition is is listed on the presentation there, is is really not meant to be a through street. And it's not designed for two-way traffic, not two-way traffic can occur on it, but it it's it's really designed to provide acc- access to the rear properties or um, access to utilities or pedestrians, walkers and such. Uh, so um, the approach we would take to address speeding um, in an alley, um, we're saying should be different. Um, generally, if you look in an alley, uh, it's narrow. Okay, they're about uh, anywhere between eleven to fifteen feet wide of paved uh, access uh, versus a um, a borough street that's anywhere from twenty-five to forty feet wide. And uh, also, um, the ano- another difference to point out is that in in alleys, there really isn't, it's a shared space. There there's not a defined area to walk or to bike or to drive. It's all as one. So i- i- it's truly a a a shared space. Um, if you go to the next slide, uh, w- w- we have, um, whenever we do receive a complaint from a resident, uh, staff goes out and does a a traffic study, and that study involves putting out equipment that measures the amount of vehicles that pass there and the time that they pass and 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 the speed that they're going. And um, um, generally, um, as as you see on on the screen there, the uh, the alleys where 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 we've done, the three alleys where we've done speed studies, the average speed is quite low. Um, between fifteen and 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 seventeen miles per hour average and eighty-five percentile, meaning eighty-five percent of the vehicles that do pass there are un- are under that are um, also quite low. Uh, next slide, if you compare that to uh, some borough streets, these are just some of the streets where we've recently done some speed studies on. And you can see uh, there from the from the um, from the table that um, one of the differences is the width of the streets. Anywhere uh, from twenty feet wide up to forty feet wide. Uh, the first four streets listed in the table are one-way streets. That's why they're a little bit narrower, or some of them are a little bit narrower. And uh, the the bottom four are 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 two-way streets. But if you look at uh, the average daily uh, trips, uh, we're in the thousands as compared in in this, in the low hundreds. Uh, also, the average speeds there are somewhere um, between uh, you know, twenty-five to thirty miles an hour and and thirty, thirty, the eighty-five percentile in in the mid-thirties, so certainly, there's a difference between streets and alleys from a standpoint of usage, much lower usage, and also much lower uh, vehicle traffic. Uh, next slide, please. So, um, huh, when when you, when you, um, when you get a complaint about about speeding, you know, there's there's, you you have a a menu of actions that you can take. Certainly, the police can go out and do enforcement, but, you know, because the the um, the amount of vehicles traveling there is so small, and the road is so narrow, you, you know, they're they're, they're not gonna catch a speeder. Um, you can go through an education campaign. Um, certainly can close the alley to vehicle traffic, that's an option, although uh, the majority of the of the of the alleys that we have are providing vehicle access to properties or to um, businesses. Um, or you can undertake traffic calming measures. So that that's what I really wanna talk about is some traffic calming measures and definition of traffic calming is 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 really uh, engineering action that you could take to to make um, to lower the speeds to make these, the space in which vehicles and pedestrians are are sharing that space safer. And you do that by by changing the feel of the road, um, and making it uh, less comfortable for a driver to feel that, hey, I can go thirty-five, forty miles an hour. Uh, next slide, please. So uh, there's there's a variety of 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 tools that that we've used. Um, um, one is a physical deflection where you, it's either a a vertical deflection in the road, so driver's going along and there's a, there's a speed hump or a speed table. Uh, a speed table would be something, uh, an example that would be on um, on um,
Cherry.
Cherry Cherry Street, thank you, uh, in uh, in front of Dickinson College. Um, we we have put speed humps uh, up uh, throughout the borough, primarily in alleys uh, and in response to uh, complaints of 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 speeding. And typically, what we do is uh, we we invested in a few um, portable ones, so we put we put them down on a trial basis and monitor traffic, and if we don't get any objections to it, and it seems to be doing a good job, then we change that to a permanent one. Uh, you can also do a a horizontal deflection uh, in in the road so that you're not driving down uh, a straight, but you're forced to make to to uh, to divert your your turn or to turn uh, uh, your vehicle, uh, thereby um, causing you to make a change and therefore becoming less comfortable and slowing down. Or there could be uh, uh, visual changes, so um, the 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 photo uh, there at the bottom is is from Philadelphia. It's a very uh, famous alley in Philly. I think it's where Betsy Ross um, lived at one point in time. And it's it's a tourist attraction. It's very, very um, nice and, but if you look at it, there's a variety of things there. It's narrow. But it also has uh, some flags, some bollards, plantings, things that capture uh, folks' eyes so that it's not a tunnel and you're not going fast down the tunnel. Uh, next slide, please. Um, so uh, as I mentioned, we we put up uh, some temporary uh, speed humps and um, generally, uh, we um, the speed hubs we put out are on um, West Chapel and East Locust Streets, uh, in those are the two alleys. Uh, we also have put permanent speed hump on uh, West Penn uh, in front of Memorial Park and West Penn in front of one and 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 three West Penn. All those uh, were installed after discussions with council. Uh, but just for your information, uh, the cost for a fourteen-foot unit, a temporary unit uh, such as shown there, which is right outside the window out there, is uh, fourteen hundred dollars. The at the investment. Uh, next slide, please. Um, so, um, the actions that we've that we've taken to date regarding um, responses uh, to um, concerns about speeding in in alleys is one, do a study. Two, present that study to council. Uh, three, based on council's direction, then spend some money and put down uh, potentially uh, change changing the speed limits uh, to fifteen or speed limits in 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 um, speed humps. Um, another action that we can potentially take is to put in uh, something such as a chicane, uh, which is a, which causes not a uh, vertical deflection, but a horizontal deflection. So I'm driving down uh, the alley and I need to to uh, turn because there's a uh, some structure in front of me. Um, you could uh, put in, you can create a chicane by putting in um, a planter um, with some curbing around it. Um, that um, could be maintained by the property owner. So the 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 one issue is, you look at the at the speeds that I had in those tables and you know, the the question is, is is there a problem here? And put yourself in the in the in the in the uh, shoes of the individual who raised the complaint. They open their front door and there's no separation. Their front door leads directly out to an alley where a vehicle is going down, so there's a perception of speed. It, you know, it could only be fifteen miles an hour, but there's that perception that I opened my door, my dog runs out, my kid runs out. And and there is a potential safety hazard. So, um, So, um. You know, one, one way of addressing that is to, is to provide some type of physical barrier between that front door. And a vehicle. And one way of doing that is to provide some type of, uh, horizontal separation. Such as, such as curbing or a planter, or a planter type of, of, of arrangement. Um, but this, this occupies space with it, in, in, and it's space within the public realm. Okay, so, um, right now, we don't have any planters on streets, uh, e- except by design such as. What was done on B Street. And what was done on B Street, we put in flow-through planters and essentially. Uh, diverted traffic, uh, around so that the, the road is narrowed and the direction of travel was changed. To try to calm traffic. Um, in this case, we're talking about only twelve to fifteen feet. So there really isn't much space available there, uh, for that. Uh, next slide. Uh, the cost for a planter, uh, somewhere around four hundred and fifty to five hundred dollars just for the structure itself. Uh, not including, um, you know, the soil in it or the plantings. Um, uh, next slide, uh, curbing, uh, you could put in temporary rubber curbing. Um, for approximately, um, a hundred, uh, almost two hundred dollars around a planter. Um, or you could put in a permanent curb, uh, a concrete curb that would be somewhere around thirteen hundred dollars for a single planter. Um, so that, that's, um, some of the, some of the actions that could be taken, uh, by staff. Currently, we have no allocation in the budget for traffic calming in, 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 um. In alleys. Um, you know, if, if, if this is something that council would like to, um, consider. Um, I, uh, staff would suggest, um. Having some policy in place that would, um, establish the procedures that we follow. Uh, to, uh, provide for, uh, some type of, of engineering solution to a perceived, uh, speeding problem.
Does anybody have any questions or comments? Council Hicks?
There was chicanery in this brief. Is that where, is that where the word comes from? I, I did wanna make the comment and I, and I thought, like, I think there's a, a lot of measures we, we can consider. I will say, it's my observation that bicyclists find alleyways to be. The least of many dangerous places to be, so. I think this makes it imperative for our regular thoroughfares to make them safer so that we're not, um, potentially. Reducing, you know, the, the safety margins that bicyclists have using the alleyways as sort of their, their, their. Um, kind of safety area, but, um. Uh, I think what I, what I found is that, if you look, you'll, you'll see more bicyclists using those. And, and if, if we wanna make those safer, let's, let's make sure that, um. We have safe, no, do that in parallel, that we have safe spaces and safe alleyways, um, convenient. Um, uh. Sort of pathways that, that, um, bicyclists can get through town, but, um, overall, I think, uh, you know, th- these are. Not only ideas that'll make, um, us safer, but I think, you know, to beautify. And, and make it, you know, make, one of the things that are, is an attraction to our borough is the alleyways is. I, I think we could, we can make them more attractive for just pedestrians and bicyclists going through them.
Mark.
I, yes.
Would you be, uh, so kind to also expand upon, uh, just some of our discussions that we had, weighing the merits of. Um, turning some of the alleyways into one-way?
Yeah, tha- thank you. I, I, that was, so there, there is a memo that, that is in the packet as well. Um, and I didn't, I, I did touch on that, that in, in, in the memo. Um, so one, one discussion is to, is to, uh, change alleys from two-way to one-way. And, um, generally, uh, you know, when you think about an alley, um. It, you have slow traffic, uh, primarily because of friction. And the friction is either it's, it's narrow or there's an oncoming vehicle and I need to slow down and move over. Um, to allow that vehicle to pass, or that vehicle is gonna slow down and move over to allow me to pass because. The space is not wide enough for two vehicles to pass as, as one. So by changing an alley from, uh, designated two-way to designated one-way. Uh, you, a, a, a couple of things happen. One is you remove that friction. And, and which likely results in, in higher speeds. And two, you're likely increasing vehicle miles traveled because a person is using the alley to get. To a certain location and, and, and really not cut through mostly just to get from, you know. Uh, I'm, I'm to my place of business or to my home, uh, and therefore if I need to go around the block, I'm, I'm making. Um, you know, more trips on it or a, a longer trip. Um, but, but generally, um, we do have one-way alleys and those are primarily because of site restrictions. Um, I know all valleys have site restrictions, uh, but, but generally the ones, uh, that have been converted to one-way are because. Um, there's large, um, multi-story, uh, structures right at that, at that entrance and, and you can't really see.
I had a question about, um, the idea of having planters. I mean, I, I. I love the Philadelphia alleys and it's a lovely picture. Thank you for including it. Um, but when you said about having the planters and a curbing, I mean, the picture in Philadelphia has bollards, which is, you know. A, a, uh, physical, um, barrier that you don't want to hit. And I think that's the whole con- concept of the, uh, planter as well. So I'm wondering, is it required to have a, a, a curb as well? Because I, I mean, a bollard doesn't have a curb. The curb, the bollard is the defense mechanism, right? So I'm just, I'm just wondering about.
Yeah, um, we, we had discussions with our solicitor a, a, about this matter and. Uh, he recommended that there be some physical, um. Uh, barrier there, um, that would alert a driver to the fact that, hey, all of a sudden, there's something here. Uh, so he recommended a curbing or s- or a bollard, or, or a series of bollards. As opposed to just a planter on its own, planter's gonna get hit.
Right, so I guess my question is, you know, if you have a series of bollards or a series of planters. You know, like if it's more than one, does that make it an on its own? I mean, I guess this is a key question, but.
Yeah, I, 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 I think he, he was, he was concerned about liability from placing something within the paved street.
Thanks.
Any other questions, comments? Mark, do you need any direction from us at this, this stage or just an update tonight?
No, th- th- this is just an update.
Okay, alright, thank you. And where are we? Oh, we are, we are at the end of the agenda. I don't need to ask if there's. There's no one here. So, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.